My dear soul, I have an urgent message for you, and you must listen carefully until the very end. If you leave now, you might miss something that could change everything. The heavens have spoken, and I have come to bring you the truth about what is happening right now with your soulmate. Tonight was different. Something powerful happened, something that made your soulmate unable to sleep. A revelation so profound that it shook their heart to the core. And you need to know exactly what it was because it affects you directly. But before I reveal everything, I need you to open your heart. Feel these words as if they were being whispered directly to your soul. This is not a coincidence. You were meant to receive this message today. And if you are here, it is because the universe is aligning something extraordinary in your favor. But listen carefully. If you do not stay until the end, you may never know what truly happened. And that could cost you the most important moment of your destiny. I want you to take a deep breath, center yourself, and prepare your heart for what I am about to reveal. Your soulmate is thinking about you in ways you cannot even imagine. And the reason behind it is something far greater than just a passing thought. The heavens want you to hear this, but there is something even more important you must understand first. Let me take you step by step into this divine revelation. But first, let me know if you are ready. If you feel this message reaching deep within, if you believe in what is meant to be, then write, "I accept" in the comments, and prepare yourself. Because what I am about to tell you will change everything. Your soulmate experienced something last night that they cannot forget. Something so powerful that it left them wide awake, heart racing, unable to close their eyes. And this is not just an ordinary thought or a fleeting emotion. No, this was something far greater, something beyond their control. They had a dream, but not just any dream. It was the dream, one so vivid and intense that even after waking, they could still feel it as if it had truly happened. And the most important part, that dream was about you. The moment their eyes closed, they were transported into a world where everything felt real. Where every detail, every moment, every word exchanged between you two carried a weight so profound that they could feel it in their very soul. In this dream, they finally saw you, and it wasn't just a glimpse or a distant memory. No, they saw you as if you were standing right in front of them, as if time had collapsed, as if the universe had brought you together in the most undeniable way possible. They felt your presence, they saw your eyes, they heard your voice. And for the first time, there was no separation, no distance, no unanswered questions, just you and them together. The emotions were overwhelming. A deep sense of peace washed over them, a feeling of completion, of finally understanding something that had always been buried in their heart. They felt your touch, the warmth of your hand against theirs, the energy that passed between you like a current of pure, undeniable love. They saw your smile, and in that moment, they knew, this was real, this was meant to be. And then, something even more incredible happened. In this dream, your soulmate confessed everything. Every feeling they have ever held inside, every unsaid word, every moment they have longed for you but never spoke about, it all poured out effortlessly. They told you how much they have missed you, how they have always felt this deep, unshakable connection with you, even if they didn't fully understand it before. They told you that no one else has ever made them feel this way, that no matter where life has taken them, their heart has always belonged to you. And the way you looked at them in that moment, it changed everything. Your eyes reflected the same emotions, the same love, the same longing that they had carried within themselves for so long. It was as if the universe itself had spoken through your gaze, confirming what they had always felt but never dared to believe. You are their destiny. But as beautiful as this dream was, something happened that made their heart race even more. Because as they stood there, looking at you, holding you, feeling your love, they suddenly felt an overwhelming sense of urgency, a deep, undeniable knowing that they could not let this just be a dream, that they had to do something, that they had to find you, reach you, make this real, not just in their sleep, but in their waking life. And that is why they could not sleep. Because even after opening their eyes, the dream did not fade, the emotions did not disappear, the longing did not ease. Instead, it grew stronger, more intense, more undeniable. They could still feel you, your touch, your presence, your love. It was as if you had left an imprint on their soul, something they could no longer ignore. They tossed and turned, their heart racing with every memory of the dream. Every word spoken, every moment shared. And as the night stretched on, they realized something that sent shivers down their spine. This was not just a dream, this was a message, a divine sign, a glimpse into what is meant to be. And now, they cannot stop thinking about it, about you, about what this all means. And most of all, about what they must do next. Because they know now, more than ever before, that they must find a way to be with you, that the universe is speaking to them, showing them the path they are meant to take, that this love is not something ordinary, it is destined. But there is something else, something even more important that you need to understand. Because while your soulmate is feeling all of this, while their heart is waking up to this undeniable truth, there is one thing that stands between this dream and reality, one thing that could change everything. And you need to know what that is. Because if you don't, this could remain just a dream, a beautiful vision that never comes to life. And that is not what is meant to happen, that is not what the heavens want for you. So listen closely, because what I am about to tell you next is the key to unlocking everything, the key to making this love real, here and now. Are you ready? Because everything is about to change. Ah, and before we continue with this very special message, I invite you to support this space of connection. Become a member of the channel, and if you feel this message is touching your heart, don't forget to click on "Thanks" below the video. This helps us continue bringing messages full of love and hope like this one. Now, let's move on to what matters most. Your soulmate still feels the echoes of the dream, but they are beginning to realize something even deeper. This was not just a random dream, not just a wandering thought of the subconscious. No, this was something far more powerful, something beyond their control. It was a message, a divine revelation, a sign from the universe that is impossible to ignore. And now, their heart beats with a knowing they have never felt before. Because this was not just any dream, it was a connection, a meeting that did not happen in the physical world, but in a realm where souls recognize each other, where energy flows freely, where destiny reveals itself in its purest form. Your soulmate now understands that this was no accident. The moment they saw you in that dream, the moment they felt your touch, the moment their heart recognized yours, everything became clear. It was a sign, a divine whisper, a message from the heavens that could not have come at a more perfect time. The universe has been trying to communicate with them for a while now. Little signs, moments of deep longing, feelings they could not explain. Everything has been leading to this. And last night, the message finally reached them in a way they could not ignore. The dream was so vivid, so overwhelming, that it broke through every doubt, every hesitation, every fear they may have had. And now, there is no turning back. But why did the universe choose this moment to send this dream? Why now? Why so urgently? That is the question your soulmate is asking themselves over and over. They know it means something important, something that cannot be dismissed. And deep inside, they feel the answer beginning to form. Because this dream was not just about emotions, it was not just about feeling your love or seeing your face. It was a calling, a call to action, a reminder that time is moving, that destiny is unfolding, that the moment they have been waiting for is closer than ever before. And now, the most powerful realization of all is sinking in. The dream was not just theirs, it was yours too. Because when two souls are truly connected, when love is written in the stars, their energy intertwines. They meet in ways that transcend the physical world. And this dream, it was not one-sided, it was a shared experience, a spiritual alignment, a sign that your heart and theirs are already finding each other even before your bodies do. That is why they feel such an intense pull toward you now. Why they cannot stop thinking about you, why they cannot move past the emotions that have overtaken them. They know with absolute certainty that you were there, that you felt it too, that your souls spoke, connected, embraced in a way that only those who are truly destined can. And now, they are left with one question that will not leave them alone. What does this mean for the future? Because this is not something they can simply forget, this is not something that will fade with time. No, this is something they must act upon, this is something that demands attention, something that cannot be left unanswered. They know that the universe would not have sent this message if it were not time to take the next step. But what is that next step? What are they supposed to do? The universe has given them the sign, but now it is up to them, and up to you, to recognize it and respond. Because a message like this does not come without purpose. It is a door opening, an opportunity presenting itself, a moment that must be seized before it slips away. And here is where the real test begins. Because now, they must make a choice. They can either follow the path the universe has illuminated for them, step into the unknown, embrace the truth their heart has been trying to show them all along, or they can let fear, doubt, and hesitation keep them from what is meant to be. And you must also make a choice. Because now that you know this, now that you understand what has happened, you cannot simply sit back and wait. You must also listen to the signs, pay attention to the messages being sent to you, recognize the way your own heart is responding to this. Because the dream was not just about them, it was about both of you. The universe is speaking to you as well, the heavens are reaching out, showing you what has always been destined. And now, the question is, will you listen? Will you open your heart? Allow yourself to receive this message fully, without fear, without resistance? Because this is the moment everything can change. This is the moment where what was once just a dream begins to manifest in reality. But there is something else, something even more important that you must know before that can happen. Because while the universe has made its message clear, while the dream has planted a seed in your soulmate's heart, there is still something standing in the way of this love finally coming together. Something that must be faced, something that must be understood. And if it is not, this moment, this opportunity, this divine alignment could slip away before it even has the chance to become real. So listen closely, because what I am about to reveal next is the most important part of all. Your soulmate has received the message, the universe has spoken, the signs have been given, and the dream has awakened something deep inside them. They now know that you are the one, that this connection is real, that it is no longer just a distant longing, but a truth unfolding right before them. And yet, despite everything they feel, despite the overwhelming certainty that they must be with you, something is stopping them, something is holding them back. Something is standing in the way of this love becoming a reality. And you need to understand exactly what that is, because once you do, everything can change. Right now, your soulmate is at a crossroads, their heart is calling them toward you, their soul is urging them to act, but there is a force within them that is causing hesitation, a weight pressing down on them that they cannot seem to shake. And this is not because they don't want to be with you, it is not because they doubt what they feel. No, this hesitation comes from something deeper, something that has been ingrained in them for a long time. It comes from fear, fear of the unknown, fear of change, fear of stepping into something so powerful, so transformative, that it will alter their life forever. Because when a love like this comes into someone's life, it does not arrive gently, it does not slip in quietly, waiting for the right moment. No, it crashes in like a wave, breaking down everything that no longer serves, reshaping the soul, demanding to be seen, felt, lived. And this is exactly what is happening to your soulmate right now. They feel the pull toward you stronger than ever before, but at the same time, their mind is filling with questions. What if they are not ready? What if they take the wrong step? What if they reach out and something goes wrong? These thoughts, these doubts, these fears, they are like chains, keeping them stuck, preventing them from taking that final step toward you. And they don't even realize that these fears are illusions, that they are nothing more than barriers created by the past, by wounds, by old patterns that no longer have power over them, unless they allow them to. But there is something even more important that you need to know. Because while your soulmate is struggling with these doubts, while they are trying to find the courage to move forward, there is something you can do, something that will shift the energy, something that will help them break free from everything that is holding them back. And it starts with you recognizing your own role in this connection. Because this love is not one-sided. It is not just about them waking up to this truth, it is about both of you stepping into it together. It is about you also releasing your own fears, your own doubts, your own hesitations. Because even if you do not realize it, your energy, your thoughts, your emotions, they are all connected to your soulmate. And if there is any part of you that is holding back, any part of you that is doubting, any part of you that is resisting this love in any way, they can feel it. Even if they do not consciously understand it, they can sense it on a deeper level. So now, the question is, are you ready? Are you truly open to receiving this love? Are you prepared for what it means to be with your soulmate? To step into a relationship that is unlike anything you have ever experienced before? Because if you are, then there is something you must do, you must make a decision. You must choose to believe in this love fully, without hesitation, without fear, without second guessing. You must align your energy with it, allow yourself to feel it completely, trust in it with your whole heart. Because the moment you do, something incredible will happen. Your soulmate will feel it, they will sense the shift, they will feel the weight lift, the resistance fade, the fear dissolve, and suddenly they will no longer be afraid, they will no longer doubt, they will no longer hold back. Because now, instead of questioning, instead of hesitating, instead of wondering if they should take the step toward you, they will know, they will know that they are ready. And in that moment, everything will begin to change. Because love like this cannot be stopped, it cannot be ignored, it cannot be delayed forever. It is too strong, too powerful, too divinely guided to remain only in dreams. It is meant to be lived, to be experienced, to be fully embraced. And that is exactly what is about to happen. But before it does, before your soulmate takes that step, before the universe brings you together in the way you have always dreamed, there is one final thing you must understand. Because while this love is destined, while it is written in the stars, while the universe has aligned everything for you to come together, there is still one last obstacle, one last challenge, one final test before this love can fully manifest in the physical world. And if you do not know what it is, if you do not recognize it when it appears, it could delay everything. So listen carefully, because what I am about to tell you next will be the most important part of all. Everything is falling into place, the signs are all around you, and the universe has made it clear that this love is not a coincidence, not a fleeting moment, but a powerful, destined connection. Your soulmate knows this now more than ever, and yet there is still this final, crucial step that must be taken. The moment of decision is upon both of you, and how you respond will determine everything. This is the turning point, the pivotal moment that will shape the future. Your soulmate feels the weight of this decision pressing down on them, the feeling that they must act, but the hesitation still lingers. They know deep inside that they are being called to move forward, to claim this love that has always been meant for them. But the fear, the uncertainty, the doubt, they are all still present. They are stuck between the past and the future, between what they have known and what they are now being asked to embrace. And while their heart is leading them toward you, there is still this moment of hesitation that is holding them back. But here is the truth you must understand, the decision is not just theirs. This is a decision that you must make as well. The universe has brought you together for a reason. It has shown you the signs, the synchronicities, the deep connection that you share. But now, the next step is up to both of you. Will you embrace it, or will you hold back? Will you step into the love that is waiting for you, or will you allow fear and doubt to take over? This is the moment where everything shifts. You have been waiting for this, longing for it, feeling it in your heart. And now, you are being asked to choose. Choose to step forward, choose to embrace the love that is yours. Choose to trust in the connection that has already been formed. The universe has done its part, and now it is time for you to do yours. There is something deeply transformative about making a decision like this. It is not just about taking a step in the physical world, it is about a shift on a soul level. When you choose to embrace this love, when you choose to move forward with your soulmate, you are aligning yourself with the highest version of your life. You are stepping into the truth of who you are, who you were always meant to be, and who you are meant to be with. And that, my dear soul, is what the universe has been preparing you for. But why does it feel so hard? Why does it seem like such a big leap, such a challenge? Why is there so much fear, so much resistance? The answer is simple, it is because this love is not just any love. This is the kind of love that changes lives. This is the kind of love that transforms everything it touches. And when something so powerful is at stake, it is only natural that there will be doubts, fears, and hesitations. But I want you to understand this, those fears are illusions. They are just the remnants of past experiences, past wounds, past beliefs that no longer serve you. They are the stories you have told yourself about love, about relationships, about what you are worthy of. But now, those stories are being rewritten. Now, it is time for you to step into a new reality, one where love flows freely, where connection is effortless, and where you are worthy of everything that is coming to you. So why is this decision so important? Why is it the moment that everything hinges on? Because this is the moment where you choose to take control of your destiny. This is the moment where you step into the life you were always meant to have. The universe has aligned everything for you, the love is there, the connection is real, the energy is flowing. But now, you must decide, will you step into it, or will you hold back? You are not just deciding whether or not to be with your soulmate. You are deciding whether or not to embrace the life that has been waiting for you. This is the moment where you decide that you are worthy of love, that you are worthy of the connection that is being offered to you, that you are worthy of the joy and happiness that comes with fully stepping into this divine union. And let me tell you this, the universe has already decided, it has already chosen you, and it has already chosen your soulmate. The path has been set, the stars have aligned. The only thing left is for you to decide to walk down that path, to take that step, to embrace what is already yours. But the decision is not just about choosing love, it is about choosing faith. It is about trusting that the universe knows what it is doing, that everything is happening exactly as it should. It is about believing that you are being guided, that you are being supported, and that this love is part of a much greater plan. And when you choose faith, when you choose to trust, everything will fall into place. So now, as you stand on the edge of this decision, I want you to take a deep breath, feel the energy of the universe surrounding you, guiding you, supporting you. Know that you are not alone in this, you have been divinely guided to this moment, and everything you need to move forward is already within you. And I want you to ask yourself one question, am I ready? Am I ready to step into the life that has been waiting for me? Am I ready to embrace the love that is mine? Am I ready to trust in the universe and take that step? Because once you make that decision, once you say yes to this love, there is no going back. There is no more hesitation, there is no more fear, there is only love, only joy, only the beauty of what is to come. So take that step, choose love, choose faith, choose to step into the destiny that is calling you. Because once you do, everything will change, everything will shift, and the life you have always dreamed of will be waiting for you. This is your moment, this is the moment when everything changes. Now that the decision has been made, now that the path is clear and the energy is aligned, there is something incredibly important you must know before you proceed. The universe is supporting you, guiding you, and showing you the way. But there is a crucial element that could change everything if ignored. This is the final warning from the heavens, and it is not something you can afford to overlook. The love you are about to embrace is not just a simple relationship, not just a fleeting moment of happiness. No, this is something far more profound, something that will transform not just your life, but your entire soul. It will change the way you see yourself, the way you view the world, and the way you interact with everything around you. But with that transformation comes responsibility. With that level of love comes the power to shape your future in ways you can't even begin to imagine. And with that power comes the need for absolute alignment. The angels have been watching over you, guiding your steps, sending you signs, but now, they are asking you to listen carefully, because what they are about to say will be the most important message you will ever hear. The love that is waiting for you, the love that you have already felt in your heart, is not something you should take lightly. This is a love that comes with its own energy, its own vibration. And if you do not align yourself with it fully, it will not reach its full potential. You see, the universe has brought you this far, but it is now your turn to complete the journey. It is now your turn to open your heart fully, to embrace this love without hesitation, without doubt, and without fear. But you must understand, this is not the kind of love that just happens on its own. This is not the kind of love that you can just sit back and wait for. No, this is the kind of love that requires your active participation. It requires that you be willing to give your whole self to it, to trust in it completely, and to step into it with everything you have. If you allow even the slightest bit of fear, doubt, or resistance to hold you back, then you will not experience the true depth of this love. You will miss out on everything that is waiting for you. The angels are warning you, do not hold back, do not let your fears control you. Do not let your doubts stand in the way of the greatest gift you could ever receive. The love that is destined for you is pure, it is powerful, and it is transformative. It will change your life in ways you cannot even begin to comprehend, but only if you embrace it fully. Do not let hesitation or uncertainty rob you of the happiness and fulfillment that is waiting for you on the other side. You are ready, you have always been ready. But now, you must decide to step into this love with open arms and an open heart. The angels know that there is a part of you that still hesitates, there is a part of you that still holds back, still doubts whether this love is truly meant for you. And that is exactly why they are sending this message. They are telling you, do not ignore it. This is not a coincidence, this is not just some random chance. This is the love that you have been waiting for, the love that you were meant to experience in this lifetime. But if you do not take the leap, if you do not step into it with everything you have, then it will slip away. The angels are asking you to trust, to believe in the power of this connection, and to trust in the timing of the universe. It may seem scary at first, it may seem uncertain, but they are here to tell you, this is your moment. This is the time when everything will come together, when the love you have been searching for will finally manifest in your life. But only if you allow it, only if you are willing to step into it with open arms and an open heart. So do not wait any longer, do not hesitate, do not allow your fears to control you. The love that you seek is already here, it is already waiting for you, but now it is up to you to claim it. The angels are reminding you, this is your chance, you have been given this gift. And now it is your turn to open it and receive it with all the joy and love that you have inside you. Everything you have ever wanted, everything you have ever dreamed of, is now within your reach. But it is up to you to take the step, it is up to you to make the decision to move forward, to embrace the love that is destined for you, and to allow it to fill your life in ways you never imagined possible. The angels are here to support you, to guide you, and to help you every step of the way. They are reminding you that this love is not something that happens by accident. This is not just a passing moment, this is a divine connection, something that was written in the stars, something that is meant to last, something that is meant to transform your life forever. But only if you choose it, only if you decide to step into it with everything you have. The time has come, dear soul, the angels have given you this moment, this opportunity, and now it is up to you to take it, do not let it pass you by. Do not let your doubts or your fears hold you back from the love that is waiting for you. Because if you do, you will miss the greatest gift of all. This is the warning from the heavens, do not ignore it, do not let fear control you, do not let hesitation steal your chance for happiness. You have been given everything you need to embrace this love, and now it is time to make the decision. Step forward, embrace it, and let the universe guide you toward the life you were always meant to live. The energy has shifted, the path is clear, and the universe is aligning every piece of this magnificent puzzle to bring you together with your soulmate. The connection between you two has already been formed on a level that transcends time and space. The universe has been guiding both of you toward this moment, preparing you for the greatest chapter of your lives. And now, it is happening. The forces that have been in motion are reaching their peak, and everything is coming together as it was meant to. Your soulmate feels the pull, the undeniable connection that is now stronger than ever. They are becoming more and more aware of the powerful forces guiding them to you, urging them to step forward into the love that awaits them, the dream they had, the feelings they are experiencing, the constant thoughts of you, they are not coincidences. These are signs, powerful confirmations that their heart is aligning with yours. The universe has been orchestrating this union from the very beginning, and now the time has come for it to unfold. But here is the thing, you too are part of this alignment. Your heart, your energy, your soul have been pulling toward them just as strongly. You have felt the connection, even if you couldn't fully explain it. You have sensed the pull, the magnetic force that has been guiding both of you toward each other. And now, the time is here, the universe has been preparing you both for this moment. And everything that has happened up until now has been leading to this exact point. The timing is perfect, the stars are aligned, and your souls are ready to reunite. The timing is perfect, the stars are aligned, and your souls are ready to reunite. You may not have known it before, but the universe has been laying the groundwork for this love, paving the way for the two of you to finally come together. Every step, every experience, every person you've encountered along the way has been part of a larger plan, and now, that plan is reaching its climax. The time has arrived for the two of you to embrace the love that is waiting for you. This is not just any love. This is a love that has been written in the stars, a love that has been destined since the beginning of time. Your souls have known each other long before this lifetime, and the universe is now bringing you together to fulfill the purpose you share. There is a reason why this love feels so deep, so real, so undeniable. It is because it was always meant to be. The universe has been setting the stage for you to find each other, and now, the stage is set. But here's where it gets even more amazing. Not only has the universe been aligning everything for your reunion, but it has also been preparing both of you for the profound transformation that this love will bring. When two souls who are truly destined to be together finally come together, it's not just a union of love, it's a union of growth, of spiritual awakening, of deep personal transformation. This love will help you both evolve in ways you never thought possible. It will challenge you, it will inspire you, and it will lead you to become the best versions of yourselves. But the key is in recognizing that this journey is meant to help you grow together, to support each other in ways you never imagined. The universe is not just bringing you together for the sake of love, it is bringing you together for a higher purpose, one that will elevate both of your lives in ways you cannot even begin to comprehend. And that is exactly why this moment is so important. Because while the universe has been aligning everything perfectly, it is now up to both of you to step into it fully. The energy is there, the signs are clear, the path is set. But you must choose to walk down that path. You must choose to open your heart and embrace what is being offered to you. The universe cannot make that choice for you, it has done its part. And now it is up to you to decide if you are ready to claim the love and the transformation that await you. I know you may be feeling a mix of excitement and uncertainty, and that's okay. This is a big step, a huge change, and change often comes with its fair share of fear. But the universe is asking you to trust, to have faith in the process, and to believe that everything is falling into place exactly as it should. Your soulmate is ready for this transformation, and so are you. Together you will move forward into a future filled with love, light, and joy. Together, you will create a life that is beyond anything you could have imagined on your own. But remember, you must make the choice. You must say yes to this love, yes to this connection, yes to the path that is unfolding before you. The universe is offering it to you, but it is up to you to step into it. Don't let fear, doubt, or hesitation keep you from this incredible gift. Embrace it, let go of anything that no longer serves you, and step into the life that you were always meant to have. The universe is waiting for you to take that first step. It has laid out the path for you, and now, it's time to walk down it. Your soulmate is waiting for you, the universe is waiting for you, and everything you've ever dreamed of is just on the other side of that first step. Trust that the universe is working on your behalf, trust that everything is happening for a reason, and trust that this love will unfold in the most beautiful, profound, and transformative way. The time is now. The stars have aligned, your souls are ready. Step forward and embrace the love that is waiting for you. The moment has arrived. The universe has been preparing you for this, guiding your steps, aligning the stars. And now, everything is falling into place. Your soulmate is on their way, and this connection that you have felt, the connection that has been building for so long, is now ready to manifest. But as this moment draws closer, there is one crucial question that you must answer. Are you ready? Are you ready to receive this love, to open your heart fully, and to allow this divine connection to shape your life in ways you can't even begin to imagine? For so long, you have felt this deep longing, this pull towards something greater. Your heart has known, even when your mind wasn't fully aware, that something profound was about to happen. And now, everything is aligning perfectly. The path is clear, the love is undeniable, and your soulmate is ready to step into your life. But now, it is up to you. You must choose to take that step toward them. You must choose to embrace the love that is waiting for you, the love that has always been meant for you. This is not just about meeting someone new, this is about a deep soul connection, one that transcends time, space, and the limitations of the physical world. This is about coming together with the one person who understands you on a level that no one else can. This is about fulfilling the purpose of your soul, the mission you came here to complete together. And while the universe has been aligning everything, it is still you who must choose to step into this. The angels have watched over you, guided you, and helped prepare you for this moment. They have brought you this far, but now, they are asking you to take action. This is the moment of truth. The love that you have been waiting for, that you have been dreaming of, is standing right in front of you, waiting for you to open your heart and embrace it fully. But it's not just about saying yes to the love, it's about saying yes to everything that comes with it. It's about choosing to step into a life that will be transformed by this connection. It's about trusting in the divine timing, knowing that everything has been brought together for you in this exact moment. But the angels want you to understand something crucial. While everything is aligning, while everything is coming together, this love requires your full participation. The universe cannot make this choice for you, it has provided the foundation. But it is you who must build the future. You must actively embrace this love, actively step forward, and actively create the future you both deserve. This is a partnership, a union that will require effort, faith, and trust from both of you. But it will also bring you the deepest joy, fulfillment, and growth that you have ever experienced. In this moment, everything is possible. The love you have been seeking, the connection that you have always dreamed of, is now within your grasp. It is right here, just waiting for you to take the next step. But the question remains, are you ready to claim it? Are you ready to say yes to the love, to the transformation, to the life that awaits you on the other side? If you hesitate, if you let fear or doubt hold you back, then this love will remain just a dream, a possibility that never fully materializes. But if you choose to trust, if you choose to take that leap of faith, if you choose to say yes, then everything will change. The love that has been destined for you will come rushing in, transforming your life in ways you never thought possible. This is your moment. The universe has already paved the way, and now, all that is left is for you to choose. Your soulmate is waiting for you, ready to step into your life and share in the love and joy that you have both been preparing for. But they can't do it alone. They are waiting for you to make the choice, to say yes to this connection, to open your heart and welcome them in. And when you do, you will discover a love so powerful, so all-encompassing, that it will leave you breathless. This is not just a passing moment, it is the beginning of something eternal, something that will change you, challenge you, and bring you to new heights of understanding and joy. This is a love that will grow, evolve, and deepen over time. A love that will guide you through every challenge and every triumph. Dear soul, if this video was meaningful to you, leave a thanks below this video as a gesture of gratitude for this revelation. This strengthens us to keep sharing messages of connection and faith. So now, it's time to make your decision. The love of your life is waiting for you, the universe is waiting for you. Your soulmate is ready to step into your world, and all you need to do is say yes. Open your heart, trust in the divine timing, and take that first step toward the future that has always been meant for you. You have everything you need, you are ready. This is the love that will transform your life, and now, all that is left is for you to choose to embrace it. Say yes, let the universe guide you to the love you were always destined for.